And good evening as I'm calling to order the regular school board meeting of independent school district number 882. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, August 4th. Please stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. All right, and looking for approval of tonight's agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. We are now moving on to agenda item number four, citizens comments. Monosso School District, 882 Policy 206 governs citizen comments, and we have also described the process with a video and guidance on the website. We welcome citizens to address the board at each regular meeting. School board meetings are conducted under Minnesota Open Meeting Law statutes. Open meetings are different from public hearing or open forum. There's no back and forth question and answer period or discussion with board members of the content of citizen comments during the open meeting. No board member, no board action will be taken at the meeting on the speaker's comments. However, comments from our citizens are very important to the board. Speakers are contacted before and after the meeting to provide follow-up opportunities to continue to work on concerns or provide closure for an issue brought to us. Citizen comments in the open meeting by law must not violate student data privacy or personal data confidentiality. Each citizen is welcome to address the board for up to three minutes. A small digital timer will be displayed on the screens in the boardroom for timekeeping for each speaker. The board would like to warmly welcome up our first speaker to the podium, Ms. Amy Spry.
All right. Well, Monosso School District has a motto, every kid, every day. Nature Based School is part of that district. There has been considerable change to the Nature Based School this year, upcoming school year. I understand there are budget cuts, and that has been unfortunate, and you have had to make tough decisions that aren't easy to make, one of which was having to let go of the specials teacher at Nature Based, who the students, the kids had fondly referred to as Mr. G. And he was a major highlight of their day. Specials have been moved to Eastview to be done first thing every day for Nature Based kids. They're going to go to Eastview, attend specials, then be bussed back to Bertram for the remainder of their school day where true Nature Based school will commence. This is quite a transition for these kids, especially the five and six year olds in kindergarten, and even more so with the kids with ADHD and anxiety. Nature Based kids traditionally arrive to school dressed out for outdoor learning. They drop off their bags, head right back outside because they are Nature Based school. The gear for the kids, the kids wear for Nature Based is often layered. Now the kids will be expected to keep all their gear together and have it when they arrive back at Bertram. We've been told that the teachers at Eastview have been briefed on this and will ensure that all gear goes back to Nature Based. I'm concerned that they aren't fully grasping what that all entails. Another concern for my family personally is our kid being bussed every day. My wife and I do not want our kid riding the bus on a daily basis. We take our kids to school every day for that reason. Even if our kids could be on a bus, right, because we are not in the Monosso School District, we would still take them to school because we do not want them riding the bus. We are now being forced to do this. I asked if we could pick up our kid after specials and take them back to Bertram, and we were told they cannot. I understand there's liability to that. So with the kids attending specials at Eastview and having to be bussed back, that takes away from their academic time due to the added transportation time. I was told that if we chose to not have our kid attend specials and just drop her off at Bertram when the other kids return back to Bertram, that she would be truant. So you guys can take away her time, but I can't. So I propose the solution. Is there a reason why instead of taking Nature Based kids away from Nature Based learning for specials, the teachers can't go to Bertram to do their special lessons there? There's plenty of space and equipment. After all, the specials were being done out there already, and as we were told, they were thriving. If you can bust 60 kids, then you could bust three teachers. There is no need for mileage reimbursement for driving their personal vehicles there, and there is no more liability than there would be for the 60 kids. So budget and liability doesn't seem a factor. Has it been considered? Have those teachers been asked to do that? If you say it wouldn't work, I would like to know a reason why it wouldn't work. I don't see any reason unless because those teachers didn't want to. I hope that's not the case because every kid, every day, right? This added transition isn't easy on the five and six year olds as it would be for the teachers. The more transitions, the harder it is to regulate and learn. Every kid, every day. Please prove that. Please consider busing the teachers to Bertram for the lessons. Keep the Nature Based kids at Bertram. Keep all Nature Based learning curriculum, just that. Nature Based. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy, for your comments. All right, now we'll be moving to fiscal stability. Agenda item number five, we are looking for a motion for the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Item number six, collaborative connections. Please help me to the podium. Our local Huglen Transportation head, Joe Kunkel, to talk about end of year transportation report and look ahead for 2025, 2026.
Thank you very much for having me again today. This is actually one of my highlights. I love coming to present what we do and hear people like or don't like because we don't want anybody not happy either. So we would like to come here, see what you can do and or what you want us to do, and we'll make those changes. I can thank my wife for doing the presentation because as you can see, I don't typically do that, but it looks much better when she helps. We'll start out with the positives from this last year. Huglen Transportation was named one of the top 200 workplaces in the state of Minnesota this last year. And how that happens is that they send an email to all of our employees, and depending on their responses, that's how you get rated by the Star Tribune for your company. So that was a big feather in our hat that, I mean, out of all the places, all the transportation companies, that we got chosen as one of the top 200. What also tells you is that our employees think highly of where they work. I might be quick on the clicker. I might be slow on the clicker.
I think you missed a slide, right?
There we go. In June, our owner Gordy Huglen won a lifetime achievement award from the Minnesota School Bus Operators Association. He has been in the bus business for, I mean, they started in 1947 here. And it's the impact he has made on a nation as well because back in 1999, we were the first company to be named the top fleet in the country for our school buses. He was one that would go to the legislature and legislate all the time for funding or for school bus standards or making school bus stop decisions law rather than let individual districts or contractors make that decision. So if we make better decisions, that's what he was part of, and that's what he was recognized for. Funny quick story on that is I, you're not supposed to tell the person. They're supposed to just come to the convention, and then they find out there. But I couldn't get Gordy to go. So I finally had to get people together and say, hey, guess what? I nominated you for this. You won. He goes, what'd you do that for? You know I don't like to speak. I said, well, here's the deal. I'm writing my mom's eulogy today. I'm going to write your acceptance speech tomorrow. I might mix them up, so you might come yourself. He did come, and he had a good time. Some of the, we have some of the most desired start times. We talked about that last year part of it, is we get calls all the time from other school districts, other contractors, how did you do it? And what are the goods and what are the bads? Because as we learned, there was stuff we didn't know, that we didn't know until we did it. And then you make the changes. So anybody that is going to do it now has the benefit of looking at what we did and go, okay, how did we not get those pitfalls before? We received positive feedback from the teachers, pairs, admin. Most people really like our start times. It gives Eric and I time in the mornings to talk about bad weather days. So it gives us an extra half hour every morning that we have that possibility to make that decision. And then in the, sorry. And our last bus is now empty by four rather than 4:40 as it had been in the previous years. So the average time riding on the bus is less. It doesn't feel that way for everybody, but the stats show that it really is better for the majority. At our office, we have career exploration opportunities. We have, we've hosted the annual kindergarten field trip. That's always our favorite trip of the year, where we bring the kindergarteners into our office. And I think Jamie's been there. I know Eric's been there. If you guys have not had the chance, it's so fun to see those little people there. And we bring the wrecker and the payloader and an ambulance and a school bus, and they're honking the horns, and they're, they're getting in the back of a sleeper of a semi, all the stuff that we just take for granted. And these little people are just so happy to see that, and that's one of their favorite days. It's our favorite field trip all year long. We also have work-based students that work at our place. We have interns. Very first year, we had one. Last year, we had two. Right now, we have one for next year, and one of the two from last year hasn't left for college yet. So he'll be leaving here at the end of the month. So we'll have one this year. And the other one that was with us, he went into the military, so he is gone already. But that's always, that's been a very good experience for us and a good experience for the kids. I know that the one that just recently left, he called me and said that he would do it all over again if he had the opportunity. They're getting to actually work on motors and work on vehicles at our place where a lot of other internships are sweeping floors and doing the menial stuff. But we don't, you're here to work, so they're really working. And we do attend the career fair, apprentice day at the thing. And this year, we did the fluids in the vehicle, which if you guys haven't seen the presentation, is kind of cool. There's 12 different mason jars we put together of all the fluids that are inside of a vehicle. And then we give away either $100 or $200 gift cards to the kids, whoever can get the most right of, okay, where's, where's the washer fluid? We put a picture up of washer fluid. We put up a picture of a diesel. We put up a picture of a gas engine. We have gas, diesel, all these different fluids. The funny thing is that the kids learned in a hurry that if we just opened the jars, we can tell the fluids a little bit better than just shaking it and moving around. So our top participant this last year was actually a female that got most of it. And we're one of two places in the country that have a female school bus mechanic that works at our place. And she was featured in the School Bus Transportation News this last year. They did an article on her. Megan is her name, but very, very great mechanic. Referrals have dropped quite significantly. These numbers are small just because I put all the schools on here. And I would encourage the admin at these schools, if you are interested in your numbers more specifically, I have a breakdown of them. It looked a lot better on my computer than it does on here. I'm sorry. But in Eastview, in 2024, we had 112 referrals. That 59 is repeat offenders. In 2025, at Eastview, we had 33 with nine repeat offenders. And you can see the other ones as you go down. The, another large drop was at the middle school. We went from 169 write-ups and 68 offenders to 102 with 36 repeat offenders. So the difference in bussing times and the way we bus has been a big, big difference in discipline for us. Can you go with that one? It's a drop almost, I think if you add it up, it's pretty close to 50%. One of the best things that we learned is that the older students are offering help to the younger people on the buses, the ones that are doing the K through 12 bussing. And I've explained it before that sometimes those older students will sit in the front to help the kindergarteners to learn how to behave on a bus. They get their backpacks ready to get off the bus when it's their time. They read them books and all the other fun stuff that happens on a bus. So it's not all the negative, but the older kids are helping the younger ones on these K through 12 routes.
Just got a point. I'll just emphasize, I mean, you look at Eastview and the middle school, I mean, just the dramatic difference. And I mean, and really look at the family structure of how families are, you know, respond. Do they have different age kids? And you take care of each other. And that's, I think, what we have going on here. It's really cool to see.
I mean, it was a nervous thing to start, but we know that Outstate Minnesota buses, K through 12 already, we knew it worked. We just haven't done it in a long time here, and it was nervous. But the number showed that it works. We haven't got to the crux of all of it, but we drove 115,000 miles fewer this last year. Most of it is because we're not going to Clearwater four times. We're not going to AC four times and all that kind of stuff. A lot of it could be attributed to where we're going for special needs that, you know, maybe we didn't go to Fairbelt this year, or maybe we didn't go there. But that's a big difference in the number of vehicles we use also. Challenges. We all know the beginning of the year was challenging. We're certainly very understanding people. There were some upset people, but I literally tried to respond to every email that I got. Unfortunately, sometimes the answer is, that's the way it is. Right now, it's not that we can't change it, but that's how we got it done this year. And thanks to you guys' support that, you know, we had it by, I don't know if it was Thanksgiving or somewhere around that time that we had redone a lot of stuff and got it to the hour or better. The problem is that when we rerouted, let's just say you always had Doug as a bus driver. Well, now, because we rerouted, some people didn't have Doug anymore. Some people didn't have Matt anymore. And they, we, we grow to what we like as comfortable. So the people that lived across the river, when they were getting basically direct service there and back, and you go, okay, well, that's going to change now. We're going to go do some more stuff, and then we're going to go across the river, then we're going to come back, and then we're going to get some more, and then we're going to go across. And that's hard on people. They don't like change. Believe it or not, we had people ask if their, people could stay on till that second time when the middle school, high school buses came. Even though it was going to be a longer ride for their little people, it was, I don't want to say it was a daycare, but it was a way that they didn't have to be home from work by, you know, the 2:50 time. So not only were longer rides a problem for some people, but shorter rides are a problem for some. And needing to be home at that time or being at the bus stop at the new times because now if we don't leave till 6:30 and the bus isn't coming till seven, that means that the parents can't leave for work till a later time also. But we've got through those hurdles, and it seemed like we were okay at the end of the, at the end of the school year. One of the things that, you know, we missed is that when we do religion for one of the churches, they couldn't do after-school religion this last year because we were out too early, and they didn't have parents that could teach the kids that religion. So they had to do it at the nighttime time for that. But that, when we talked to other districts, those are the type of things that you go, I didn't, I didn't think that one all the way through of what that impact was on them. 2025, 26. I think we told or asked that we deleted all the kid, delete them, but we limited all the transportation for every kid this year. So if you want to ride, you have to sign up. And with Jamie's help this year and, what can, IT's help, we got our numbers to work. So we really knew who was riding, who wasn't riding. Now it's about getting the right data. So now every single student has been removed from the database. Out of the 4,200 that we know we should have right now, 2,213 have registered so far. I think you recently sent out a notice. So I think that they should be coming in better. But we're going to start calling everybody that we don't have a response from yet. And it's 2,000 people we got to call. We can call 2,000 people in three weeks. We can get that done. So, but I think that this is really going to clean things up. So we don't have to have extra vehicles, and that's what it's really about. This year, we currently have one electric van. It gets about 80 miles to the charge. Not great, but it works for school bussing because we don't really go more than 80 miles in a, in a, in a charge. They come back after AM routes, plug in again, and then go out again for PM. We added one, one electric bus. We are still struggling with Excel to get power to charge it. Right now, they won't give us the 440, 480 that we need. So we're going to have to charge it on 220 or 240 and just use it as a spare and say, okay, well, it'll be charged up at the end of the week, and we'll use it as our 13th bus when we need to go to Big Lake or Becker or something like that and do it that way. We added one propane bus. We used to have propane buses back in the 70s and 80s. Didn't work real well. Didn't heat real well. They've changed. They've told us that it's much better. So we've added one propane bus. The one downfall is that Speedway right next to us, you can't fill propane vehicles anymore. You either have to drive to Camping World or Fleet Farm. Camping World's about a dollar more per gallon than Fleet, or Fleet Farm. So we're putting a full-time person in that bus and saying, when you're done at the high school, just go fill up your bus at Fleet Farm. If it turns out that it's a really good thing, we'll just get another tank because we have our own fueling system. We have a 10,000 gallon diesel, a 2,500 gallon gas. So if we had to add a propane tank, we could. But if it turns out that it's a bad idea, I'd rather fill up for a year at Fleet Farm We had some very, very good meetings this year with coordinators and different admin. And I think that once we started explaining how billing works for transportation, it made a big difference of how they decided when a student should leave the school. Because we can bring everybody to school at the right time. But let's say I want to go home at 1:00. Well, we have a whole bunch of other buses out at 1:00. But if you go home at 1:10, or you go home at, you know, 11:50, whatever that time is, that's not the middle of the day's time. It saves money. And if you can work together to say, okay, well, maybe we can go home at 10:50 rather than 11:00, or go home at 1:10 rather than 1:00. It just saves a district money there. I know it's not you, but Swan River had considered doing bussing at the elementary time and then coming home on the high school time because their days shortened already. So they were going to get a longer day and shorter rides by doing it that way. But this year, they've opted to stay with the, the plan they had for the previous year. If anybody goes onto the State Patrol's website and looks at your guys' inspections of vehicles or our inspections of vehicles, you're going to be shocked at what your score was or what our score was. They changed the procedure from 24 into 25. They went to pass fail. So if you have one all bout to fail, in previous years, you could have 25 points off and still major stuff. So if you had bad brakes, that was an instant fail. Or if you had emergency bus or not working, that was instant fail. But now it's literally pass fail. So I think that if you were to look at yours, you go, hey, why did we have three vehicles out of our eight or nine? I remember you got fail. Well, you might have had a light bulb out. You might have had a stuff inside the van. The same thing on ours because we've had perfect inspections for all 100 vehicles before, and this year I was shocked. Go, that's not us. So we're sending three mechanics on Wednesday to the State Patrol to kind of learn more what they're going to look for rather than, I hate to train to pass the test. I would rather have vehicles all up to snuff all the time. But if you're going to specifically look for, oh, well, here's a door seal on a brand-new bus, that's bad. But we just bought the bus. How can it be bad? But they fail them. So that's, if anybody goes to that length, you'll see why the difference in ratings for our inspections were. There's our new little activity bus. It should help the school. It should help athletics. So any of the small groups now that have 14 or less participants, because it's 15 with the driver, the, there's a provision in the law that employees of a school district can drive this vehicle with a normal Class C license as long as they have the DOT physical. In the school bus world, in our world, we can't drive this bus without a commercial license. license. We can, if it's 10 passengers or less, we can. If it's over 10, then we have to be yellow and black and have a special license. But because of the law, we bought this bus, we'll try it, see how it works for you guys, see if, if it's advantageous for you to, to use this one versus paying us to haul kids to Minneapolis or someplace else. So we'll try it, see how it goes. Before I get to the questions, I forgot to talk about construction. The state and the city have been very, very good to us. Normally they will email Eric and I and ask, hey, what does this do? They've told us both these roundabouts are supposed to be done by the time school started, because that's why we asked for them to start them at the end of school rather than the beginning. Always for us, the beginning of the school year is hard. So we'd rather have no construction then. I'd rather you start construction in March, because I already can deal with that. Just so you know, the eastbound lane for 94 is this year, the westbound is next year. And the year after that, they're going to take that bridge out by us. The one that goes over 25 and 94. Yeah, they're going to redo it. They were nice enough to ask me what my opinion would be on, would we rather have it closed permanently for three months or one lane each way for five months? I picked the three months and I would pick June, July and August. And I said, if you can't do that time, let's pick like May, June, July or April, May, June. Because by the time we get to the end of the school year, we can figure out how to get around. But if we're having to deal with a bridge closure at the start of school at our office is hard. So I don't know that they'll pick that option, but at least they ask us what our opinion would be. Any other questions or any questions?
I know last year as you were going through routing basically all year long, right, and tweaking, you had mentioned there was a lot of new things that you had learned that you can do with this new type of, our, our school start times and stuff. And so I was curious if like, because you said you were going to kind of dive in and see if you could even improve routing even more. Has that been something you guys?
That's what we're, that's what we're in the process of doing right now. And once we can start eliminating students that, okay, we're not going down that turn around, we're not going down there. So now your routing can be so much more efficient. Even if they're going to ride 10% of the time, let's take you off the route, we'll leave you in the, the, the database. So if you have a car, if you have car trouble or mom and dad aren't there, we'll come down and get you. But we can save five or 10 minutes, which is a big deal. If you can take that five or 10 minutes from that one, five or 10 minutes from that one. And then in the special needs world, we started collaborating with the school during the school year and, and explaining how it really works behind the scenes, they were so much better at working with us. Say, oh, you mean if we go at 9:00, that works better than 11:00? Yeah, it works a lot better because everybody wants to go home from 11:00 to 1:00. So if you can go a little bit before, a little bit after, it's just so much more efficient. Or you can reuse vehicles on top of vehicles on top of vehicles.
So those would be like, you know, your students who may not have a full day and it's on their IAP. And so looking at things and learning from Joel, our coordinators and director have gotten to the table several times here now. And I've been a part of some of them as well. And just making sure that, you know, that they're looking at the big picture rather than making isolated decisions. And like the big picture might say that there's other students that are getting picked up on, on another IAP 10 minutes later. Well, instead of sending a, you know, a whole new transportation vehicle, they're looking at how to do combos.
And if it's, if it's cheaper for us to put the para on there or an eat on there, or if it's cheaper for you guys to just have that person do it, maybe there's collaboration, collaboration that way that we're sharing the employee. Because maybe their hours were not as long as they like, well, they can come ride on the van for the next two hours and they can pick up the extra part there.
Any other questions for Joel in transportation?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number seven, safe and healthy culture, starting off with our closed work session summary. On July 21st, 2025, the Monticello School Board conducted its annual evaluation of Superintendent Olson in a closed session at his request. The board rated Superintendent Olson's overall performance as highly effective, recognizing his strategic leadership, transparency and commitment to collaboration. Notable accomplishments include significant progress in school improvement efforts, improved student attendance rates and expanded family and community engagement initiatives. The board commended his dedication and responsiveness while encouraging continued focus on project management tools, expanded use of the organizational chart and delegation to sustain good momentum. Recommended focus areas for 2025, 2026 included this, including the school district finances, communication, governance and continued school improvement. The full closed work session summary is linked to tonight's agenda if you would like to read. Now we will move to item B, Special Education Coordinator's Master Agreement with our Director of Human Resources, Rob Daniker.
I did expect to have a tenet of agreement with the Special Education Coordinators to share with you this evening. Unfortunately, I do not. There is one sentence of the draft agreement that is, we're still trying to gain mutual agreement on intent and understanding. And so I think the best course of action would be to lay this possible approval over to the next meeting.
Okay, sounds great. We'll just move on to item number C, first reading of policies.
All right. So we have several policies to bring forward for first reading tonight. The policy committee has always meets monthly on the first, the date of the first meeting of each month minus July. We don't meet in July. And so tonight we discussed six policies in one form that goes with one of the policies to bring forward this evening. And so the first one is Policy 614, School District Testing Plan and Procedure. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the school district's testing plan and procedure. Exciting for the policy committee was that we had the input of our new Director of Teaching and Learning this evening, Director Laura Stebner. And so the 600 series largely has to do with academics. And so Director Stebner suggested that we add a line on page five of the draft regarding student plans such as 504s and IAPs for, and plan for required student testing accommodations. That's the only significant change locally we added. And then there were some minor changes through, this updates the, the policy over time. Any questions on 614 at all? Moving on to number 615, Testing Accommodations, Modification and Exemptions for IAPs, Section 504 Plans and LEP Students. The purpose of this policy is to provide adequate opportunity for students identified as having individualized education program or IP Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Sections 504, Accommodation Plan, otherwise known as 504 Plan, or English Learner EL needs to participate in statewide assessment systems designed to hold schools accountable for the academic performance of all students. There is no significant changes to this policy from the last time the board approved it in 2020, just some minor edits as recommended by MSBA. Any questions on 615 at all? All right, moving forward to 707. This is the transportation of public school students. The purpose of this policy is to provide for the transportation of students consistent with the requirements of the law. And there were, again, some minor edits brought forth by legislative changes. In particular, there was some minor changes to language regarding distances, radiuses and things of that nature. Any questions on 707? All right, Policy 708, Transportation of Non-Public School Students. The policy committee had met previously on this one about a year and a half ago and discussed this one a little bit. There were no, the last time the board reviewed this was 2018 and there have been some minor changes because of legislation on this one, but nothing substantial. Any questions on 708? Policy 722 is the next one, Public Data and Data Subject Requests. The last time the board reviewed this policy was, I believe, also 2018. Yes, it was. There have been, this particular policy has been subject to much scrutiny in the last couple of years as public data and data subject requests are increasing to Minnesota schools, including ours. And so there have been some changes to the MSBA model since 2018. And so that's what informs bringing this forward tonight, along with a change to the form, which I'll discuss separately. Any questions on 722? Okay. So the form for 722, that's brought forward for consideration this evening for first read, make some amendments. The current form that we have approved is missing a couple of critical criteria for a public data request form. So just really quickly going through the additions that we're recommending, we're recommending that we add a question, are you the subject of the request? The reason rationale there is that, that creates a separate timeline to a general data request. General data request is within a reasonable time period. If you're the subject, that stipulates it's 10 days, 10 business days or less that a response is required. We're also clarifying that there is a charge for copies and also a charge for electronic dissemination. Under Minnesota Statute 13.03, a electronic dissemination is interpreted the same as a, a charge for a copy or a copy itself. And then finally, on our current form, we do not have listed the district's responsible authority, which means that anyone could submit a public data request to any of our employees and that employee would then be the responsible authority since we don't list one. And so we are listing one on the draft policy, or the draft form, I should say. Any questions on the form for 722?
Yeah.
Yep.
What would be an example of a request that we would be charging for now that we didn't use to charge for?
There is no difference, just a clarification that we recently received a data request that asked for, did not ask for copies, but asked for electronic dissemination. And the, under the state statute, there is no difference between the two. And so, you know, we're going to provide that clarity to the requister, that what they're requesting would be subject to charge. But just really want to be clear and transparent in the form itself that an electronic dissemination request is in itself a copy request.
So we haven't charged for the electronic dissemination in the past, or have we?
No, we would have if we were, since I have been here, we have not received a request that we've been required to, or that we would charge for. We've, the most similar request that we've received since I've been here, which is two calendar years, was a request for electronic dissemination, but that electronic data was already publicly available on our website in the form of board agendas and minutes. And so we simply pointed the person to those records and they were satisfied. In this case, it's actually fairly similar, the request that I have currently, although the board agenda minutes are not, they don't go back as far as the person is requesting. So theoretically, we, I would be, well, I will be informing this person that to meet the, the fine details of the request, it may be subject to a charge if they want all of the records they're requesting.
Okay.
I would just be able to give a little actionable item that we've had in regards to that policy. Jason and I worked on a request, Jason Borgstrom, I'm a Director of IT. We had a request on discipline over like a two-year period and it was going to take a lot of hours. And so we worked with our attorney to see what was a reasonable amount of hours that we could charge for, put in an electro, electronic file and then also the, the person hours and came up with a reasonable rate. The person did accept it and they, so it does happen from time to time, but it's, in this particular case, it was a couple of years ago. And we did charge for it, kind of to your question, Marge.
Any other questions on 722 form at all? All right. And then finally, Policy 802, Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Material. And so again, this was some minor changes through legislative updates as recommended by MSBA. The policy committee had a, a good discussion around the, the disposition of surplus school computers. And in talking with Director Borgstrom prior to the meeting tonight, the statutory limitations on how we can sell those actually precludes us from doing so in most cases. So most of the time what we're doing with our Chromebooks and iPads is we're using them until they're no longer supported by Google or Apple and then disposing of them through destruction. So those are the policies for first read tonight. No approval is necessary and it would entertain any further questions otherwise.
We are, thank you, Mr. Daniker. I would like us to go back to item number B. Since it was an action item, I propose that we make a motion to table the action until next school board meeting.
So moved.
Or until, or until we have an agreement to.
So moved.
Move by Mary Bartel, seconded by Casey Root. To all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. All right, and that brings us to adjournment at 5:42 PM. A regular meeting of Monticello School Board will be followed by a work session. And we'll take a little five-minute break and then start our work session.